Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the CalSTRS Board Meeting. Ask our staff to take the role, please.
Morning. Good morning.
Morning, Ross.
Denise Bradford.
Yeah.
Ms. Hendrix?
Here.
Ms. Higa?
Here.
Mr. Prisant?
Here.
Ms. Erdan?
Here.
Um, let's see, Mr. Tang? Okay, Ms. Yamamoto?
Here.
Ms. Whitaker for the Director of Finance?
Here.
Mr. Rafino for the State Treasurer?
Present.
Mr. Johnson for the State Superintendent of Public Instruction?
Here.
And Controller Yi?
Here.
Okay, and I have a brief statement to read regarding today's meeting. The CalSTRS Board Meetings are live web-streamed and video archived and available to the public on calstrs.com. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, you have a core, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but to read the brief statement. The CalSTRS Board Meetings are live-streamed and video archived and available to the public on calstrs.com. Individuals who wish to address the board should dial into the public comment line at 833-986-0555 and wait for the 10-minute public comment period at the end of the agenda item the caller wishes to address. For comments not pertaining to a specific agenda item, there will be an opportunity for additional statements at the end of the open session. Each caller is allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. However, if there's not enough time for each caller to have three minutes, the timing will be at the discretion of the Chair. To protect the privacy of callers under the age of 18 who wish to address the board, only their first name and affiliated organization may be provided, but other personal identifying information such as their last name, age, or school may not be shared. So with that, Chairman Keely, back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell, and I acknowledge Mr. Tang is now present in our meeting. Good morning, Ken. Entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
Removed.
Removed.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve today's agenda. Without objection, the agenda has been approved. I see our Chief Executive Officer, Ms. Lichnok. Good morning, Cassandra.
Good morning.
Did you have comments for us, or you just came in to be here for the role as well?
Just came in to
Great.
participate in the role.
Good to see you. Ken? Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like to just take a moment and we want to welcome you to the board and just briefly congratulate you on your appointment. It speaks to who you are as a person and certainly want to congratulate you and welcome you to our board. But maybe take a moment and briefly introduce yourself.
Certainly, thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, it's actually a very big honor for me, especially, I guess, you know, this little Vietnamese immigrant who was a who lives in the refugee camp for about two years, surviving that and, you know, getting to America and only speaking two words of English. Never in my wildest dream would be, you know, here amongst all of you amazing people. And to be appointed by the Governor is such an amazing honor. So definitely, I will work my hardest to make sure that I serve the community that he has chosen me to do. And as far as my background is concerned, like I said, I'm an immigrant from Vietnam. I came here, we left Vietnam when I was six, but I didn't get, I didn't reach America until I was eight. So there's a two-years period where, you know, we live in, my family lived in refugee camp and got sponsorship from my uncle. And so went through a public school here, you know, live in Alhambra and grew up in Alhambra and now coming back to serve on the school board in Alhambra School District. So this has been very cyclical for me. You know, just realizing that, you know, there, when I came here, there was not a whole lot of folks like myself, you know, to seek help, you know, when I needed the help. And so just coming back to making sure that I get those kind of help for our students who went through the same experience. So that's kind of a nutshell in terms of my background. I've taught for, I started my 26th year in teaching. And you saw yesterday, you know, the chaos with the kids. And pretty much same thing this morning, you know, and I'm glad that I was able to leave that this morning early and was able to come home and be here fully with this meeting. So I just want to thank everybody and look forward to working with everyone. And I hope that I will make everyone proud with my work.
Thanks so much, Mr. Tang. We're honored to have you part of our team. And I won't disclose your full personal email address because we are live and public. I'll disclose a portion of it. And I think personal emails often describe a lot about individuals. His personal email is three putts. Those of us who play golf can appreciate three putts. With that, we're going to go into our closed session. So we are going to leave open session at this time. For the members of the public, we will be in closed session the remainder of the morning. So we will log off here and then log back into the closed session Zoom link. Thanks, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. We are back in open session of the CalSTRS January 2022 Board Meeting. There is nothing to, the CalSTRS Board met in closed session this morning. There is nothing to report out of closed session. Like to acknowledge Ms. Miller from the Department of Finance, who would like to make a comment at the start of our open session. Gail?
Oh, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. It's such a pleasure to be able to acknowledge the amazing team at CalSTRS. And there's, there's a word in Hebrew, it's heinayi, and it means like, here I am. But it's really like, I heed the call, I take the call. And I think our team at CalSTRS is a perfect example of this. So as we all know, with Omicron, we face such a surge of illness and then such a shortage of folks that are able to go into the classroom and help our teachers. And the Governor issued an executive order for healthcare workers and teachers to really be able to fill in the gaps. And over a 24-hour period, the amazing team at CalSTRS kind of heated the call, heard the call, and then heated it and stepped into action. So I asked the Chair if we could just acknowledge every single person, obviously led by our CEO, Cassandra Lichnok, and Brian Barto, our Chief Counsel. And then also, in addition, and this was such a team effort over such a short period of time, Brian Sitzman, I'm so sorry if I get your last names wrong, Jill Lukens, and then Bill Perez from Benefits and Services, Diane Alstap, Beth Rigerio, Megan Cassidy, Jocelyn Martinez-Wade, Nicole Snyder, and from Accounting, Nalini Shachner and Michelle Stocker. So it's truly phenomenal. And of course, most of this credit goes to the amazing retired teachers that chose to step up, chose to hear the call and have been in the classroom making sure that our students could get this in-person learning. So it was such an amazing opportunity to be a part of it, and I'm really, really grateful. And Cassandra, thank you so much for your leadership and really helping everyone step up. So thank you for that privilege, Mr. Chair, I really appreciate it.
And thank you, Ms. Miller, and of course, our heartfelt appreciation to the Administration and Governor Newsom for that executive order and stepping in and trying to find solutions to real problems at this time. So, and thank you for taking time to acknowledge our hard-working staff. God bless you. Let's move right to our work for this afternoon. Item seven is the CEO's report. Cassandra, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Keely. I won't be very long with this. I just wanted to highlight some of the work that's being done on our construction activities since the November meeting. There's really been significant progress on the construction site. And you can see from the, from the pictures that I put into the report that the exterior skin of the building is going up. We have gone through some of the most difficult permitting phases. I really feel like there's a lot of traction being made and progress being made. We have the interior concrete steriles that have been poured along with the installation of stairwell systems within the building. The interior concrete walls have been painted. We have some upcoming progress that you'll, you know, be interested in seeing when you finally come back to the building in person with us. And we'll be able to see some of the work, like the lobby skylight construction that's being worked on currently, the interior bridge construction. The exterior framing of the bridge is already well underway. And there's going to be an additional report on this and another item just coming up right after, right after my item. The other thing that I just wanted to highlight is some of the things and improvements that are going on in West Sacramento, just in general. The city of West Sacramento is continuing its ongoing planned improvements in the River Rock area. And the work is really the north and south of our CalSTRS campus. So it really improves the environment in which our current campus sits. We already have a really expansive boat dock that was completed during or finished just at the beginning of the pandemic on the west side of the Sacramento River. But the city has also approved the North River Walk Trail. And that extension progress, a project includes transforming and improving existing, an existing tower which is located to the northwest of B Street and Third Street and just a few blocks from the CalSTRS campus into an art installation. So we're excited to see some of those improvements. And there's also plans to improve the riverfront in the Bridge District just south of CalSTRS campus along the river between the Tower Bridge and Pioneer Bridge. So these improvements focus on the public access to the riverfront and creating a connection between the open space and planned parks, the trails and the amenities around there. So it really is starting to develop. There's a lot of construction going on in West Sacramento right now. We're just one of, one of the projects currently underway. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was just announcing the retirement of one of our senior leaders in the organization. Larry Jensen, our Chief Auditor, is going to be retiring probably after the first quarter. We're going to be going out with the recruitment within the next week or two. I didn't want, I wanted to make sure that you are all aware. I've had conversations, of course, with Betty and Joy. But he is planning to retire sometime after April. This will not be his last meeting, of course, and we will make some acknowledgements and celebrate him at a future date. But I just wanted to let you all know that that is coming up. And that is all I have.
Thanks very much, Cassandra. Don't see any board members' questions, so we will move right along to item number eight, which is the headquarters expansion, the campus expansion.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. I think we have one member from the public that wants to speak on item seven.
Thank you.
Is that accurate?
Yes, we have one member of the public in queue.
Thank you very much. Please.
Okay, our member of the public is Kevin. I'm sorry, can we get a three-minute timer, please?
Good afternoon, CalSTRS Board Members. My name is Kevin Welch, and I am the Chair of the Retirement Committee for the California Teachers Association. At this time, CTA and our coalition partners are moving forward with legislation that aligns with our stakeholder concept beliefs. We believe that the best way to engage with stakeholders is to work together to get AB 1667 by Assembly Member Cooper signed into law. As everyone here is keenly aware, the status quo is causing financial damage to retirees that is morally reprehensible, and the stakeholder concept beliefs will help to address the devastating impacts on our retirees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Samantha, is that the last public comment for the item?
That is the last caller in queue.
Thank you. So we'll go right to item number eight. Lisa Blatnick and Julie Underwood from staff are here to present.
Good morning or good afternoon, Chair Keely, members of the board. I'm Lisa Blatnick, CalSTRS Chief Operating Officer, and I'm here to present the Headquarters Expansion Budget Item. Julie Underwood, CalSTRS Chief Financial Officer, will be presenting with me today to discuss bond financing options. And this is an action item. So for some history, in November 2018, the Board approved a not-to-exceed budget of $300 million to expand its current headquarters to support the growth of the organization for the next 30 years, utilizing tax-exempt lease revenue green bonds to finance the project. The budget supported a substantial completion date of July 7, 2022. That budget was developed by very experienced construction professionals and included what they thought was an appropriate amount of budget contingency to complete the project. The schedule was developed based on best practices, published timeframes for permitting, and a contingent of weather days and additional inspection days. The project progressed as planned until about March 2020, when the CalSTRS design team completed the final permit package and submitted it to the Office of the State Fire Marshal. After a long delay, CalSTRS received notice that the plans were being rejected due to multiple new issues that were identified by the OSFM reviewers. These issues also needed to be corrected on the three permit packages that had been previously approved by their office. The resubmissions of their earlier permits, of the earlier permits and the final approval of the fourth and final permit put us in the permitting phase for a year longer than we anticipated. The project team worked diligently to resequence activities and work overtime as appropriate to ensure that the delay to the project schedule was only seven months, putting our current substantial completion date at January 31, 2023. This scheduled delay has had a direct impact on the project budget and is the primary reason we are here today, asking for an additional not-to-exceed amount of $18.5 million in funding to complete the project. Next slide, please. So the delay requires that the project team, general contractor, subcontractors, and consultants remain on the project seven months longer. This will increase the general condition costs for all parties. The project has added an additional inspector of record to support the inspection process to ensure the schedule does not slip further. And we need to extend the builder's risk insurance and general liability coverage through the end of the new construction date. And we have had increased costs for IT network integration and equipment. Next slide, please. So this slide provides you with where the additional funds are necessary. But before I walk you through this slide, I would like to correct the record for a typo that was made on page four of the written materials for this item. We listed $6.7 million in additional hard costs for the DPR-GMP agreement, but it should have been reported as $9.7 million, and it is shown accurately in this slide. The $9.7 million is offset under the hard costs due to a couple of savings. The contract for the audiovisual buyout was less than the budgeted amount, and the owner-designed savings was based on an exercise the team engaged in to decrease the budget for items that we still had control over and had not bought out. So we were able to choose some alternative finishes in the lobby and decrease the number of audiovisual screens in the small conference rooms. Under the soft cost, you'll see additional costs related to the scheduled delay. But there is also the IT network and integration added costs that are a direct result of COVID-19. There have been cost escalations for the IT equipment, and based on the hybrid work environment that we've adopted post-COVID, we need additional network drops and collaboration spaces to ensure efficient communication between in-house and telework employees. And then under the project contingency, we're adding an additional $4.2 million. You can see that $1.2 million is money we already expect to spend, and the other $3 million is for unforeseen costs. Next slide, please. So overall, the project still has 12 weather days and 30 contingent days for final inspections. And this is an opportunity to pull the schedule back and reduce the cost of the overall project. I would also like to remind the board that there is $4.6 million of hard cost contingency still in the overall $300 million budget that is for conditions and events that were unforeseen to the contractor at the time the GMP was agreed upon. So if funding is remaining in this line item at the end of the contract, a percentage goes back to the contractor per the agreement, and the remainder will be money unspent on the project. And then on the previous slide, I had already covered the additional project contingency. The team feels will cover any other unforeseen activities. Again, this request is a not-to-exceed amount based on the many variables that are left in the last year of construction. And we are very hopeful that the full amount is not necessary when the project is completed. So this ends my portion of the presentation, and I'd like to head over to Julie Underwood to talk through bond financing options. Julie?
Thank you, Lisa. Next slide, please. So again, Julie Underwood, Chief Financial Officer. And as Lisa mentioned, we are asking for a not-to-exceed amount to complete the project. Now, we won't need this funding until the end of this year or early next year. Now, we do know from our experience from the first bond issuance that issuing bonds does provide for overall savings to the fund as opposed to just paying cash. In addition, from our investments from the original bond issuance, we've estimated that we'll have approximately $2 million left over to offset this budget deficit, which means we would only need to finance $16.5 million if the entire not-to-exceed amount was needed. Now, to see an example of the potential savings, if you look at item number eight, page six, you'll see three interest rate scenarios that reflect overall savings of between $5 to $6 million when financing $16.5 million as opposed to just paying cash out of the fund. Now, we consulted with our legal counsel as well as much of our finance team from the first issuance, including our municipal advisor and the State Treasurer's Office. We've also had conversations with some of our investment staff on interest rate forecasts and took into consideration the risk of waiting a year to issue, including various issuance scenarios. And everyone on the team is supportive of not issuing the bonds until the final amount is known. Now, this is an industry best practice to wait until a project is completed before issuing a second round of bonds. It reduces the risk of financing more than we need, and it reduces the complexities of the overall bond sale. But by waiting to issue the bonds until the project is substantially complete, we will need to borrow funding from the trust fund for a few months, and then we'll reimburse the fund for the amount borrowed once the bonds are issued. Now, the loss of trust income from the short-term interim funding was taken into consideration in our financial modeling on page six. Now, if bond financing is approved today, our next steps would be to come back to you and provide you with bond education and seek your approval for two resolutions. One for the CEO to have authority to issue the bonds, and the other would approve the reimbursement provisions, same as what we did for the first financing. And we would also provide you with updated financing estimates once we get closer to the issuance. So next slide, please. So we are recommending to the board that you approve the additional funding for the project not to exceed $18.5 million utilizing tax exempt lease revenue bonds to complete the project. Now, we're also asking for your approval to issue the bonds after substantial completion of the project when final funding is known, which will require that interim funding from the trust for a few months until the bonds are issued. Now, we have representatives on the line today from Ridge Capital, our construction manager, as well as Montague DeRosen Associates, our municipal advisor, to assist with any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Lisa, NASA, take the slides down at this point? Thanks. Any questions? Comments from the board? I see Ms. Miller, Department of Finance.
Thank you, and thank you for the answer about whether or not we can, we could attempt to do this in multiple tranches versus a single one. Two questions about sort of the bridge financing is, could you maybe, just at a future date, a little bit more information about scenarios, timing scenarios, about when you'll need the money and then how much the fund will lose and how that will play out? I just see the one analysis. I think just having that full information before we go out to sale of the bonds will be really, really helpful. And then, does that make sense, Ms. Underwood? Okay, great. And then just the second piece is, and I know we'll continue to have these conversations just about the status of whether or not we'll be able to lease the building. But I don't see an analysis of if we're doing a bond sale and if we can't get to capacity or close to capacity based on our predictions. And I know our predictions sort of started now and then, and were long-term predictions to begin with. But if there's any modeling of what it looks like not to be able to lease the building and what that would mean potentially for a bond sale, and if we would need to include any of that within the existing bond sale just in terms of what does it mean for revenue going forward? So when the item comes back, if it's approved today with the resolution, if we could just get a little more detail on those two issues, that would be really helpful.
Can I provide you with that additional information, yes?
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
And Gail, just, I think the scenarios around the leasing, something that I'm very, that the leadership of the board is sensitive to. We'll be communicating with staff between meetings. And if appropriate, we could even have a standalone item that just discusses different scenarios and updates us appropriately going forward as the world continues to evolve and change post-COVID pandemic, return to work, and how spaces are being used. So something the leadership of the board is very mindful of and plan to keep the board fully apprised of.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Controller Yi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought I heard kind of a note of confidence that the amount that is being requested, including the additional contingency, is probably going to be sufficient through the end of the project completion. Okay.
Yes, you did, Betty.
Okay, good. And I guess I wasn't clear, maybe for clarification. I guess, you know, we didn't, when the budget and the contract were executed, we weren't anticipating the impacts of COVID and obviously labor delays, supply chain cost increases and the like. So did that all fall onto CalSTRS? Or how were those kind of additional costs kind of handled in the contract, I guess? Just to be clear.
Yeah, those costs did fall on CalSTRS. The contractor contingency that we have in the project is for very specific things. Scope gap, fluctuations in costs, those kinds of things. Those are things that we have been able to take from, we have been able to take from contingency. But the things that really impacted this project are things that wouldn't come out of that contingency contractually with that vendor. That have been costs that we've had to bore ourselves.
Okay, all right. That's helpful, thank you.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment and not a question that the State Treasurer's Office obviously has reviewed and has looked at this, and they fully support the recommended action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafino. Seeing no other hands, can we take that as a motion, Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Thanks, is there a second?
Second.
It's okay, it's been moved and properly seconded to approve the staff recommendation. Any further discussion? Ms. Hendrix?
Mr. Keely, if you don't mind, I just wanted to say thank you to Bill Prisant. He and I have been working with the team as well as Lisa, her team, the folks on the call that are behind the scenes. I know we're not quite finished yet, and we certainly didn't want to be at this place of having to, you know, acknowledge, you know, delays in time and resources. But I think to Betty's earlier question, between COVID and between, quite frankly, some of these permitting issues, but I think, you know, we've highlighted things that are out of our control have brought us to the place that we're at. And I just, much like our pension solution, you know, these are long projects that have a lot of moving parts and a lot of different teams working together to try and get us to the goal. I'm confident we will. I remember Karen going to the Cliffs Bar building and looking at, you know, their building as a model for our buildings, that was a long time ago. So looking forward to this, but I just wanted to say thanks to the team and to Bill and his leadership on the board to help get this project to the finish line.
Thank you, Ms. Hendrix. Ms. Bell, would you take the role, the call, the vote, please? Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendrix?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Mr. Prisant?
Yes.
Mr. Tang?
Yes.
Ms. Erdan?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Hi.
Ms. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
And Controller Yi?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Item nine is a review of the board valuation policy for the defined benefit program. Mr. Lammerow, Mr. Reed. The item is scheduled for 30 minutes and turn it over to the two of you.
Thank you, Harry. Good afternoon, everyone. Happy to be here. Yes, so what we wanted to do, so, so this is a review of our board valuation policy. The current valuation policy was actually put in place in 2015. When the funding plan was adopted by the legislature in 2014, we needed something to implement the funding plan and it, it was done to, in the form of this, of the board valuation policy. And if you look at the policy, most of the provisions in the policy are simply provisions that also exists in statute, but many are not. So what we wanted to do today quickly is just kind of compare both and show you where we thought we wanted to make some changes. And again, we only have very minor changes that we are recommending. So Jonathan, can you go to the next slide, please? So the first thing I just wanted to highlight, if you think like of a, of, of your valuation policies, some of the key provisions of our policy is, for example, is how, how frequently should we do our valuations? And how frequently should we review the, all of the actual assumptions? And it's interesting here to point out, if you look at the, at the column that says existing statute, this, the existing statute is pretty silent when it comes to how often we should do valuation. It says we should do them every six years. We don't believe we should ever, ever do those on such an infrequent period. We like doing them every year, so we're asking them to keep. The actual, the review of the assumptions, we currently don't do those every four years. A statute is silent when it comes to those. This actually is part of what we call the ALM process. Yesterday in the investment committee meeting, Geraldine talked about the fact that we're about to start the work on the ALM process. So that includes this as well. So that review, the work will start later this year, will happen most of 2023. And we should be presenting to you the formal report on the review of the assumption in January of '24. So when it comes to these frequencies here, we like what the valuation had, what the policy has, we don't have any changes on those. Next slide, please. So the rest of the policy really deals with either the employer contribution rate or the state contribution rate. Now, what's interesting is when you look at the employer contribution rate and you look at the main parameters of our policy, most of those are already set in statute. So our, our policy simply repeats what the statute says, so we don't see needs to make any changes. It can stay as is, but the funding period of 2046, the maximum changes either up or down in the rate of 1% are set in statute. There's a maximum supplemental rate of 12% for the employers. Now, when you add their base rate of eight and a quarter, sometime you'll hear a maximum rate of 20 and a quarter for the state, that's where it comes from. It's all in statute. It's also in our policy. We can keep it. The real change really we have for the employer, it's not listed here, but it's, we're recommending that we remove one of the provision we had in the policy to deal with potential special situations. We've explained it in the, in the agenda item, our reasons why we think we can remove it. So really on the employer, there's really not much to do at this point since most of the parameters are set in statute. And next slide, please. Now, what's more interesting is when you look at the state contribution rate, very few of the parameters that are set in statute for the employers are actually set in statute for the state. The only one is the one that I think you're all familiar with is the maximum increase in rate in, of 0.5% of payroll. That's the only one that's set in statute. We have it in the policy. For example, the funding period, nothing is defined in statute when it comes to the state share of the unfunded liability. The policy has 2046 as our funding period for consistency with the intent of the funding plan and the employer's period. We're had, we like keeping it. Another area where there, where there's nothing in the statute was with respect to decreases in contribution rates for the state, there are no limits. And this is the one area where we want to add a new provision to our board policy. We think it makes sense to add a limit of half a percent of payroll. It's consistent with what the employer has. You've got the same limit on decreases as increases. And, you know, concerning the fact we, we understand how sensitive the state contribution rate is to investment, the experiments, for example, we think that having a limit on decreases makes sense. We don't have a maximum rate set in statute for the state. We don't think we need one as well. Especially with the fact we can only increase the rate by half a percent a year. It makes no sense to have a maximum supplemental rate for the state. The one thing I would like to highlight here is we, although there are no minimum contribution rate for the state set in statute, we have one in our policy. It's 4.311. And again, keep in mind, this is the supplemental rate. The pay, the state also pays 2% extra to the defined benefit program. So that's really a minimum rate of 6.3%. This was actually put in, in the policy in 2016 at the request of the representatives of the Department of Finance of the Board. We like if you're there, we see no reason of removing this provision. The one other change we have for the state contribution rate is since our board policy already includes all of the provisions that are in statute, we wanted to include one provision that's currently in statute that's not in our policy. It's the policy, it's the provision that says that if the state is done paying their share of the state, of the, of CalSTRS unfunded liability, that their supplemental rate will go down immediately to zero. Again, that's in statute. Not something that we would normally recommend, but it is in statute, so we are asking to include it in the policy. And this is probably the one aspect of our policy that we're going to keep an eye on over the next few years. Because if you recall, when we presented to you in November, our review of funding levels and risk report, as a result of the investment return we had last year, the 27% return we had, now the state's share of the unfunded liability is projected to potentially be eliminated three years from now. So if we, if we stay on that schedule, the state supplemental rate would drop to zero immediately, then we could run into issues in the future, possibly because of the limits we have on increases. And again, we're probably going to talk to you about this a little bit more in May when we present the results of the valuation. And we know more as to where we are this year with respect to investment returns and so forth. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say today. For sort of a quick little summary of what we're recommending, on page eight of the agenda item, you can kind of see a bullet list of the changes that are being recommended. And attachment one as a copy of the current valuation policy and the changes we are recommending to make to the policy. And that's all I have for today. I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, David. Staff could take the slides down? And before we go to questions, Samantha, are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this item?
There are no members of the public in queue.
Thank you, Samantha. Any questions? Controller Yi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a clarification. So, so, so the policy would permit, how do I ask this? So would the policy permit CalSTRS to resume charging the state supplemental rate if future investment losses result in unfunded liability prior to the end of the, the, the plan in 2046?
Yes. Yes, the only issue is that, let's say the state does in fact eliminate its share three years from now, which is what the current projection shows. And we have, let's say, a return below expectation a year later, then we would be able to raise their rate, but only by half a percent.
Right, okay, got it.
We would be able to.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Harry.
Thank you, Beth. Any other questions? Seeing none, could entertain a motion?
Let's move for approval, Harry.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved, properly moved by Ms. Hendrix to approve the staff recommendation, seconded by Controller Yi. Any other discussions or questions? Seeing no hands, Ms. Bell, would you take the vote, please?
Ms. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Hendrix?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yeah.
Mr. Prezant?
Yes.
Mr. Tang?
Yes.
Ms. Erdan?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Controller Yi?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Item 10 has been deferred to our future meeting. Brings us to item 11. Cassandra, will you present this, please?
Certainly. At the board's request, we looked at modifying the remainder of this fiscal year calendar and next fiscal year calendar board meetings to be adjusted from the Thursday, Friday schedule to a Wednesday, Thursday schedule beginning in April of 2022. So we made those adjustments on this, on this next one and a half year calendar cycle for your review. I, I believe that there might be a, a, a recommendation or a request from board member Bradford on, on the July meeting. So I see that she's raised her hand to speak to that.
Thank you, Cassandra. Ms. Bradford?
I would like to respectfully ask my board colleagues that we leave the July 6th and 7th meeting scheduled as is. Many of our constituents, as well as a couple of board members, are already committed and would have to, I don't know, figure it out, we'll say. So, and so we have increased participation. Hopefully that's okay with everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Bradford. Mr. Tang?
Yeah, I also concur with this, Ms. Bradford with regards to the dates for July, just because we have a, a national conventions around that area, around that time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tang.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Can you just let us know what those dates were, Ms. Bradford? I'm sorry. I don't have a problem with it. I just would like to make note of it.
Yeah, it's just keeping July 6th and 7th, Thursday and Friday, instead of moving it to Wednesday and Thursday.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you very much.
And so just to be clear, that's the 7th and 8th.
The 7th and 8th, yeah.
Yeah, because I was looking at July 6th and 7th and I'm saying, well, it's still another.
So we're keeping Thursday, Friday, July 7th and 8th, 2022. Then prospectively after July, right, Cassandra? Am I saying the right thing? After that July meeting, we'll go to our Wednesday, Thursday routine for now until.
Well, we have, we have, we have the, we have the April offsite, that is a Wednesday, Thursday, and May is Wednesday, Thursday. So we would only do July, Thursday, Friday, and then pick up again with Wednesday, Thursday.
Great. Seeing no other hands. Without objection, we'll, we'll approve. Maybe we need to take a roll. Do we, Roslyn? You're on mute.
I'm on mute. Okay.
I'll move approval of the board calendar, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I move approval of the board calendar as amended to reflect July 7th and 8th, please?
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
All right. And I was second, Ms. Bradford?
With Joy.
Oh, Joy. Okay, thank you. I'm glad I asked. Okay, Ms. Bradford?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Hendrix?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Mr. Prezant?
Yes.
Mr. Tang?
Yes.
Ms. Erdan?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Great. Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Controller Yi?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. So item 12 has been deferred to the March meeting, which brings us to item 13, which is benchmarking review project. And I would ask that our staff and consultants are presenting this item. This is an information item, so it's no action, although I believe in the write-up, it's asking for some kind of, some direction. Turn it over to our staff and consultants.
Thank you, Chair Keely. Melissa Norsha, Chief Administrative Officer. Good afternoon, board members. In the interest of time, I'm going to toss this over to Stephen and Alan with Makita. They did a lot of heavy lifting to bring this review to you today. So a lot of good information. Looking forward to the discussion and feedback. I have asked your primary compensation strategist, Peter Landers, to join this meeting. He's not part of the presenters, however, benchmarks and compensation kind of walk hand in hand at times. And so he is available in the event that board members have question that fall under his purview. With this, I will hand it over to Stephen and Alan.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Steve McCourt, Makita Investment Group. As Melissa mentioned, Alan Imkin is with us today and as well as Stephanie Sword. So thank you, pleased to be presenting the, the first phase of this project back to the full board. This project began roughly six months ago as a broad review of benchmarking at CalSTRS. Before I jump into the presentation and, and we'll be going through this, these slides at more of a 30,000-foot level. But I did want to take a, a moment and just to thank everybody involved in this project. As you can imagine, benchmarking touches lots of different areas of the CalSTRS organization, top to bottom and left to right. And as we'll note in a moment, this particular project involved interviews and feedback from board members directly and engagement with CalSTRS HR staff and other staff, performance staff that is involved in benchmarking as well as your compensation consultant. So a, a quick but weighty thank you to everyone who's been helpful in getting us to this point so far. As was mentioned, today's presentation is informational. There's three objectives for, for today's presentation. First, we wanted to review with you quickly the current state of benchmarking at CalSTRS, meaning how does CalSTRS use benchmarks currently? Second, provide the results of our survey of the board on benchmarking. And third, provide the results of a peer survey that we conducted on benchmarks from other large, uh, public retirement systems in the US. There's no recommendations associated with this, although as was alluded to, there certainly seems to be some productive direction that we could head with this and we'll address that as we go through the presentation. So with that, I will hand it over to Stephanie Sword to take us through the first section, the current state of benchmarking at CalSTRS.
Great. Thank you so much, Steve. Good afternoon all. This is Stephanie Sword with Makita. And as Steve mentioned, I'm going to start by painting a picture of CalSTRS' current state of benchmarking. You know, one of the things you'll hear us mention more than once is the notion of complexity when it comes to CalSTRS' benchmarks. Over the next few slides and starting on page four, you'll note that the breadth and the depth of the benchmarks are quite notable. So the pyramid on page four, if we could move to that page, please, summarizes the benchmark landscape from a very high level. The red dotted line in the middle of the pyramid not only indicates where the current delegation split sits, but it also highlights what I see as a metaphoric iceberg. Essentially, there's so much more beneath the surface and behind the scenes that staff oversees, which ties into that delegation split and what the board defines. Given the ever-growing complexity as the plan continues to expand and grow, a consideration for the board, and Steve will discuss this in further detail, would be to move that delegation split up the pyramid and provide staff with further delegated authority, which would thus simplify and streamline the process for the board. Putting the benchmarks into the context of the portfolio on the next slide, the magnitude of the depth begins to show. This, as this expands out in all, and considering duplicates, there are 401 benchmarks across the total plan and staff utilizes 298 benchmarks at their discretion to monitor portfolio performance. The oversight of this complexity requires obviously an in-depth knowledge base and understanding. The oversight of this complexity requires obviously an in-depth knowledge base and understanding of the relationships that these benchmarks have. Especially when incentive compensation comes into the picture. The next page unfortunately isn't a reference to my family tree, but rather a great example of the many composite and benchmark hierarchies within the portfolio. Each box has its own implications and objectives, while also creating a relationship among the rest of the tree. For many other composites, this structure expands out and down, increasing in complexity. You know, the Makita team has worked on a number of public and private plans over our combined tenure, but this is by far the most complex structure we've come across. Which isn't a surprise, given the size of CalSTRS' plan and makes the management oversight of this extremely commendable. In the context of oversight on the next page, we visually depict the comprehensive and independent process. When changes, additions, or modifications are made to the benchmarks, which reinforces the great internal resources and controls that CalSTRS has. And not only is the investment staff involved with the oversight of benchmarks, but the investment services performance staff. Is intimately engaged throughout the approval, implementation, and ongoing maintenance of the benchmarks as shown here. So at this point, I will pass the mic back over to Steve, who's going to dive into the CalSTRS Benchmarking Survey Results.
Great, thanks, Steph. And if, if we could turn to slide 11. In the presentation. As, as you're aware, we started this project with a survey. Of the board members back in September. To get a sense of where specific board members were challenged with respect to benchmarking. And the, the survey details are in the appendix of this presentation, and we provided some summaries. Summary of the, of the survey. Throughout this presentation. I'd like to move to slide 11. Just one more forward. There we go. The, the, and I would highlight that that's, that survey was supplemented by. One-on-one interviews with, with five of the board members who requested interviews during the survey process. What I wanted to focus on was areas of board consensus. There was. I would say. Significant consensus around what Stephanie has already highlighted, that benchmarking is, is complex. Generally, and to the extent that it can be simplified for the board, that would be a fantastic outcome. But there were a few areas worth noting of consensus from the survey. First of all, seems to make sense to most people that benchmarks should be reviewed when the asset allocation policy is, is reviewed at CalSTRS. The board should definitely be involved in approving the benchmark for the total fund. Since that's the outcome that matters at the end of the day. The board should be involved in approving benchmarks used for incentive compensation purposes. And this is a theme that I'll get back to in, in a moment. Benchmarking at CalPERS is partially as complex as it is because benchmarks. The way they're currently utilized are intertwined with incentive compensation at, at CalSTRS. Fourth, the board should not be involved in approving benchmarks at the sub-asset class levels. And finally, benchmarks should be aligned with CalSTRS' long-term objectives, not short-term objectives. We can move to slide 12. Some additional conclusions from the interviews we conducted. As noted, benchmarking for the board is complicated by the use of benchmarks and incentive compensation. Many board members would prefer simplifying the board's role in incentive compensation and therefore in, in benchmarking. And one concept that kept bubbling up throughout. The survey was potentially. Achieving that goal by moving incentive compensation calculations to the total fund level as opposed to the asset class level. Which would allow the fund, allow the board to satisfy its suggestion of keeping benchmarks. The board's involvement in benchmarks at the total fund level. As well as being involved in setting benchmarks that are used in incentive compensation. The next, the next section of this presentation summarizes our survey of other large peer public pension plans. I'm going to just hit a couple of slides in this section, slide 14. We surveyed 13 of the largest. Public pension plans in the U.S. Nine agreed to respond to the survey. I will note there's, there's often a. Desire not to. Discuss information related, or could, that could be related to incentive compensation, which is why. Four of the funds chose not to, chose not to participate in the survey. If you turn to page 16. Few things to note. Within benchmarking across other large peers, 75% of respondents use broad industry benchmarks. Whereas 25% customized their benchmarks for plan-specific constraints and preferences. As, as you know, at CalSTRS, benchmarks are customized for CalSTRS' specific. Constraints and preferences. 37% of respondents had multiple benchmarks at the total fund level. These could include policy benchmarks that were weighted based on the strategic asset allocation of the plan. Dynamic policy benchmarks whose weights vary based on the actual weights to asset classes within the plan. Or simple reference portfolios of, of more simplistic stock and bond mixes. And incidentally, we can go through those in more depth at future meetings on benchmarking. And 63% of the respondents reviewed benchmarks when asset allocation is reviewed typically every three years for this cohort of plans. So I'm going to conclude on page 19. With just next steps. First, it was clear from the survey and the analysis that the board's involvement in benchmarking has become over time overly burdensome and complex. We look forward to receiving any feedback, additional feedback and commentary from the board in this presentation. We will continue to work with staff and your compensation consultant. And the board to identify potential solutions to streamline benchmarking at CalSTRS. And our aim is to. Recommend potential changes to benchmarking before the beginning, beginning of the next fiscal year. So. With that overview, I will hand it back over. To the chair and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCourt, and thank you, Ms. Song, Ms. Norcia. Appreciate the report and the presentation. There are obviously some consistent themes that you've highlighted and some interest of the board. Would like to hear from my colleagues at this time for specific questions or ideas for next steps, if any. So I'll open up to the board. Ms. Miller?
I was hoping someone else would go first. It's been such a long afternoon, but to the Makita team, that was really phenomenal. I think just so insightful and informative and really well done. Really appreciate the, the analysis you did of other funds. I do think there is a lot that we can, we can learn from this system and how we go about working. With the team at CalSTRS to make sure that it makes sense within the, within all the work we're doing. But I think that this, so much of what you presented, Mr. McCourt, makes so much sense in terms of, of the board understanding our objectives. The team understanding our objectives, aligning compensation with benchmarks. I think the, the way you suggest simplifying it makes just infinite sense. And I, I hope that we can continue to work exactly as you suggest. I think that the, the work and the analysis you're doing is, is really exactly what needs to be done. And the only sort of, so just huge kudos to you and thank you for all the work that went into it. It's, it's just an example, I think, of, of really hearing and listening to us and the feedback and the rest of the community. The only question I have is, how does the risk budget, the new risk budget approach, like how would that interact with simplified benchmarks? Do you have a sense of that yet, or is that kind of a next step?
So if. If CalSTRS migrates to a structure where. The board's involvement in benchmarking. Is at the total fund benchmark level. The, the risk budgets right now reside at the asset class level. So conceivably, there wouldn't be a significant impact on the risk budgets. Based on the board's involvement in, in benchmarking for, for the moment. And, and maybe permanently, because there's good reasons, the private market asset classes have been excluded from the risk budgeting process. So unless, unless those are incorporated in some way in the future, it, it's hard to calculate a risk budget at the total fund level. So risk budget at the asset class level. For the moment, and so there shouldn't be any, I, I, I wouldn't foresee any significant. Impact on the risk budget or the concept of the risk budget at the asset class levels by. By. Having the board set the benchmark at the total fund level.
That's super helpful. And how many pieces of data do you think would go into the total fund benchmark? Like how, I mean, just because some of the confusion now is that we have this hundred and, what did you say? I can't remember, like how many, what, how many pieces of information would have to build in? To the total fund, and would we trade one problem for another?
Yes, somewhere between two and 4,365 pieces of information. It's, it's really up for, up for debate and discussion. Right now, the, the total fund benchmark is very complex because it is essentially a roll-up. Of what are very complex asset class benchmarks, many of which are roll-ups of sub-asset class benchmarks. So. It's, it's really up to the board at the total fund level of how complex it wants to make the total fund benchmark. And that decision is, is going to be largely based on how many modifications or adjustments you want to make to the benchmark. To reflect specific preferences or constraints that, that CalSTRS has on its investment portfolio. So on the simplistic side, you could simply have, for sake of argument, a 75%, 25% stock-bond mix. That's easily calculated with two pieces of information. That roughly reflects the overall risk structure of your portfolio. But there's going to be a lot of tracking error between your actual returns and that benchmark. Because your investment portfolio doesn't reflect that 75, 25 mix. And so it really is a, a decision and a, a process that we would go through with the board. To find that balance between. A benchmark or series of benchmarks at the total fund level that are not overly complex, yet still represent. The, the, a broad opportunity set that CalSTRS has with its investments.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Ms. Erdan, then Controller Yi.
Thank you, and I echo the thanks and my comments. Without making it complicated, so it's going to be a challenge to keep it simple. I, I would find it helpful as we move to the next step to integrate the, the issue of the time. You referred to it with the timeframe. With the amount of alternative investment that we have, there's excellent reason for it. We have excellent skill. But it takes time, you know, to have meaningful results there. And so how we integrate that, in particular with overlay of incentive compensation as well. And the second is, as we look at the collaborative model and already the amount of investment that's in-house. That we think about what that bar means, since, you know, a very significant part of our long-only is really market replication. And then we've got a 50 basis point risk budget. So I'd ultimately love to get to a simple point, but to ensure that we've kept these factors in mind. So that we, you know, we're rewarded for performance when we have it and we're accountable when we don't, recognizing the tools and objectives that we have.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Controller Yi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, thanking to Makita for all this information. I'm not sure we made a lot of progress with respect to kind of simplification, but it's nice to just kind of have this all laid out in terms of what our process could look like going forward. And I, I guess, so, so based on your look at. On peer practices, it sounds like we're in line with others relative to. Where the responsibility lies for the total fund benchmarks and certainly for incentive comp benchmarks. And I guess my, my question, actually not even a question, but maybe something to consider as the board. Embarks on taking on the total fund benchmark, and you've alluded to this. I, I guess I'm really concerned about just being sure we have transparency on the process about. How we arrive at the total fund benchmark, and as you alluded to, it's a way, super complex process. Even when it's just a simple roll-up of the asset class level benchmarks. And so I'm wondering if, when, when that decision comes to the board. You know, perhaps just providing. And maybe it's ahead of the, the decision itself, but you know, just help us with kind of the transparency aspect of this. And, and I think that's important because even though we're in line with our peer practices, with, with the practices of our peers. I just don't want there to be any, you know, kind of perceived sense of conflict or, you know, just how we arrived at some of these benchmarks. I think we've had the use of custom benchmarks, you know, over time as well, which is complicated things. And so, I mean, the story is difficult to tell, but I, I do think that we have a responsibility to at least, you know, provide that kind of, you know, public. Information about how we're going to ultimately make that decision.
Great, yeah, and our, our expectation is that we would. Engage and involve the board in all of the steps going through that process of determining the total fund benchmark. But also providing various options to the board on types of benchmarks from very simple to very complex. And so I think that my, my main message is, is the decision will be yours to make. And, and we'll, we'll be providing all the relevant information and data necessary to make that decision.
Good, okay. And then my last question is, are there? I guess. Other thoughts or views or contrary views about the use of benchmarks, you know, kind of out there in, among thought leaders at this point? Because of how complex they are. You know, perceived to, you know, be self-serving with respect to, you know, just. You know, funds putting themselves in a position of, you know, beating the benchmark. I mean, I, I guess, yeah, we, we hear sometimes, you know, kind of criticism of, of, you know, the use of benchmarks. And so just wanted to see what the noise level is around all that right now.
Yeah, I would, I would say there's, there's a lot of noise around benchmarks with funds that have incentive compensation. Which is almost always tied to benchmarks. For funds that don't have incentive compensation, the, the, the topic of benchmark doesn't get a lot of interest. From staff or board or consultants. And so it's, it's just a less pressurized topic generally. So I think the, the issues with funds that do have incentive compensation and use, use investment benchmarks to. To calculate that. You, you've hit the biggest discussion point, which is simplicity versus complexity. Simplicity has the advantages of better transparency, better understandability to the stakeholders, constituents. Complexity has the advantage of being much more precise and being able to judge the value that. Investment staff is able to add or not to a plan. There's, there's, there's less randomness in the, the relative returns to a, to a more complex benchmark. So different funds land in different places. I wouldn't say there's a best practice, but that is the. I wouldn't say there's a best practice, but that is the, the major decision point that boards make.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Prisant.
Thank you, Steve, and, and thank you to Makita for putting together what made my eyes glaze over. The only thing that really matched it is usually the, the actuaries attachment to the report's annual report. But no, this is a very compelling topic because in this, and I'm, I'm, you know, this is an area that I, I, I've always had trouble with because it, it is so complex. I've just got a simple question. Here we've, you know, we've really, one of our major moves has been to move to the collaborative model. And part of the collaborative model's design is the, an overlay of ESG considerations throughout each asset class. And also with, you know, sizing and a variety of other aspects of the collaborative model, where each asset class, asset classes will work with one another. And so you really do have, you know, performance that is, you know, a collaborative performance. And, and, you know, it seems to me that's where, you know, the total fund return comes into play. And maybe I'm wrong, but it, it seems to me that's where, where it would come into play. And so in compiling, you know, or attempting to compile, uh, uh, put together a, a total fund return benchmark, wouldn't it, you know, would it, would it not be helpful to at least make sure that the team that we have, that has been, you know, performing at such a high level in the investment division, is got to have, we're going to have, you know, a little bit of buy-in there. I mean, would, would that be out of the ordinary to, to, to sort of access, you know, how they see it as well? So that we don't, we create a, a benchmark that really doesn't meet the consensus of those people in the investment decision that, that we want to work together for the total fund return. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, it, it, it does, and it's a, it's a, it's a tricky topic because the benchmark that's, is selected has an impact on the incentive compensation
I know.
to those parties. And so, so the, the, the answer is yes, there, there needs to be a, a feedback loop with the investment staff on benchmarks. But there, there's challenges to having any perceived influence on benchmarks by, by staff. And so that's, that, that's one of the issues we've, we've already been addressing with, with HR. And we think we have a pretty good handle on that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Ms. Ms. Anken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. Just the comments of Mr. Prisant and the controller underscore that it's really not a benchmark issue, a compensation issue. At the largest, it's a governance issue. Because it all is integrated and it's important to recognize you can't bifurcate or trifurcate these issues. You have to look at them holistically. And that's what we're attempting to do. And it's going to require the board, the HR staff, the investment staff, and everyone else involved to collectively make a decision that's really in the best interest, that doesn't provide disincentives, incentives, or the ability to game the benchmark. And that is one of the challenges anytime you establish a benchmark. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Anken. So a couple of thoughts, and maybe it can help us think about next steps. It's apparent by your interviews and the survey results that the board views the current use of benchmarks as overly complex. And there is a, an interest for simplification. I think that those are accurate statements. At, at the same time, no one on this board wants us to embark upon a project in which the players on the team that have been performing so well would be adversely impacted by any changes or recommendations to reach the goals of simplification. So to the extent backtesting some models that would demonstrate the objective of simplification without adversely impacting the the staff, if that is possible to do that, I think it would be prudent for us to ask that Makita, working with our HR staff, as well as the compensation consultant, and to the extent it's permissible and appropriate to interact with the, the right staff, to begin to try to explore some, some options and some models and come back to us with some of your thinking in trying to accomplish those goals. I don't, and I would ask if any members of the board who have a differing view or can't, you know, or have concerns about what I just expressed, please let me, let us know. I, I, I want to be sure that that would accurately reflect the interest of the board. Okay. Final thought would be obviously something, a project like this, incremental and realistic expectations in terms of progress is more important than rushing to a destination. We have lots of priorities. I think this is a good step because you've gotten feedback from the board in terms of our interest relative to simplification without negative impact on the, the staff that have been performing very well. Steve, any feedbacks? Steve McCourt, thoughts?
That's, that is, yeah, Mr. Keely, that is perfect feedback. As, as noted, we have been working with HR staff and others walking down this road. So I think with this feedback, we can continue down that path and return to the board with some options and some realistic and incremental steps to, to take along the way.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any other comments or thoughts from anyone? Seeing none, thank you. Item 14. In the pleasure of the board, we're, we're moving at a pretty good pace through the rest of the agenda. My suggestion is if anyone needs to take a break, you could just, you know, excuse yourself by going off camera for a few minutes and then coming back on rather than taking a group break at this point, if that's okay. Terrific. So we'll continue then with the agenda. Item 14, Ms. Martinez-Wade.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Joyce Lee, Martinez-Wade, Director of Governmental Relations. I don't have any bills for you to take positions on today, but I did want to come and give you an update on where we are in legislative session. The legislature returned to their session on January 3rd, and the, in, the deadline to introduce bills is February 18th. So they have been busy, although we haven't hit the busiest time yet. And so I wanted to let you know that the Assembly Committee on Public Employment and Retirement will be authoring our one sponsored bill this year, which is our housekeeping bill. You heard about earlier AB 1667, which is connected to the stakeholder beliefs as Mr. Welsh described, and also the employer reporting to final benefit update that was included in the CEO report. Right now, the bill contains intent language related to those stakeholder concept beliefs. And we're working with the sponsors of the bill. And as more specifics get included, we'll bring that back to you to take a look at. Also, another bill that's been introduced so far is SB 868. And that bill contains option one. If you'll remember back to September 2020, is the SBMA options report was presented to you then. And option one is the, the option that was most appealing to you if the legislature moved forward with something. So that's now in legislation. That would be an increase to the SBMA benefit for pre-99 retirees. It would be a different percentage based on the decade in which they retired. So fairly technical bill, but you're familiar with the, with the concepts. And we are working on the analysis for that bill to bring to you in March. So you'll have an opportunity to see that then. And hopefully, as bills, as we approach the deadline, of course, the most bills will be introduced closest to February 18th. But if we're able to turn those around, they specifically and directly affect CalSTRS. We'll be able to bring them to you in March. And if not, I will be back in May. And that's all I have for my update at this point.
Thank you very much. Don't see any questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15 is the consent agenda. And there are numerous items on the consent agenda. And I believe Ms. Yamamoto, would you like to pull any of the items on the agenda?
Yes, 15, 15D, 15D like David.
Okay, 15D is, and David has been pulled. Are there any other pulls from the consent? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. With the exception of 15D, it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Because it's on consent, I don't believe we have to take a roll. Do we need to take a roll, Rosin?
Please should take a roll.
Okay, please do.
But it's up to you. Just because we're, we're virtual.
Please do.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Mr. Prisant?
Yes.
Mr. Tang?
Yes.
Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Hi.
Ms. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Controller Yi?
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Ms. Yamamoto, 15D, would you like to ask any questions?
Sure, sure. I had a number of questions, but a lot of them were answered either in writing or talking directly with staff. And so I, I wanted to focus on number three, the CGI data validation analysis. And when I read this, it involves two people to validate, verify, and reconcile the data. But originally, the, the, the contract said it was for $950,000 plus. And then, so then, I'm not, and, and we didn't see that one because of the limitation. So when this new addition to this contract for 15, well, $518,000 plus, it, it seemed like it was for a shorter period of time, but it's half of the original budget. So I was kind of wondering what were the original terms of that original budget were? And why didn't the original terms include validate, verify, and reconcile the data as part of the start conversion?
Okay.
That's one question. I do have another one, but if you want to answer that one, that would be great.
My name is Ashish Jain, Chief Technology Officer. So Karen, I'm happy to give you the answer. So this is just not for a short period. This is a 14 months. So we are going for four, 14 additional months for two resources. And this is not the part of Team CGI responsibility. This is the part of our activities, which we are doing in the various project, in the project, like validation, reconciliation, operation report, and et cetera, et cetera. And these are the not only two resources. We have a team of five people in validation and five or six people in operation report. They are the staff augmentation to help in our activities.
But the right, it says two, two analysts.
Yeah, so these are the two analysts, but we have
For the 14 months?
Yeah, for 14 months.
Okay, so for 14 months, for two analysts, we're paying $518,000?
Yes.
Okay. And so, and you're saying that the original contract didn't allow for this kind of service or this kind of information to be done for us?
No, I, actually, if you just see, the contract term is started in April 15, 2020.
Right, right.
And going to the February 14, 2022.
Right.
So we are executing our option years and adding the funding because we didn't finish that data validation, verification, reconciliation, and operation report.
Okay.
And this is, this is just not like two individuals. These are the part of the team. And we are, you know, these are the two additional resources, but the team is like five and five each in validation team, as well as the operation reporting.
Okay, well, I guess I'm not understanding why then it was written up that way. And then in the end, when it's titled CGI Technologies and Solutions, and then, and it's, the title is Data Validation Analyst. So you're saying that it's a separate contract from CGI? You're not, you're saying it's not, it's a separate one, but then why is this with CGI? I guess that's what I'm not understanding.
Okay, so this is the scope, is not a part of our Team CGI scope of responsibility. This is the part of activities we are doing. With like, just like I think you heard about UAT, user acceptance testing. We're part of, we are validating that one. So they're helping us in, in, in that activities, in those activities, sorry.
Okay, so in the end, who gets the money?
In the end, who gets?
CGI, right?
Yeah, CGI.
But you're saying it's not a separate, it's a separate contract from CGI? So that's what I'm not getting. I'm sorry if I
Oh, oh, sorry. So I, I think it's not a part of our bigger CGI contract. This is a staff augmentation. We go out for RFP for these individual skill set, and we procure these resources through that one.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm still not understanding. I'm still not understanding, so I
Can I help out a little bit?
Please.
If you don't, if you don't mind. I, I, we spent so much time talking about CGI, but there, they do other things besides just our pension solution project. So if you start off with, we have a staffing need to do this data conversion, we needed to find additional resources. So we went out to, to find them. And CGI, the company, just happened to have the resources that we needed. So this is an entirely separate engagement with them, just to provide these staffing. Like, think of them like consultants. So they all, they work for CGI, but it's not, it's not part of the pension solution project.
Okay, so that's why it's called the Data Validation Analyst then?
Yeah. And, and yes, and as Ashish said, they're supplementing our own data work. But we didn't have enough technical expertise on the team. So Ashish and his team went out to try to find individuals in the private sector who could augment that. And CGI happened to have individuals that fit that bill. And that's why we have a contract with them.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah.
So it's a subcontract with CGI then, so the money is still going to CGI?
Yes, it is. It's going to CGI for an entirely separate service than the pension.
So just an offset of, they're the umbrella company, and then this, this, this extra analyst position is for those, that specific purpose?
Yes.
Okay, so they don't, they're not expected to any other scope in that, in that spot, right?
No, I believe so.
Okay. All right, so I'm good with that. Thank you for the clarification and explanation. And I'm just sorry I didn't get it sooner than that.
And Ashish, thank you for letting me jump in.
Thank you, Brian.
But then I, and then, Mr. Chair, I also have a question on the NCB. May I do that as well?
Yes, please do, Ms. Yamamoto.
When I was reading this, I was, you know, a couple of things occurred to me that, you know, why is this an NCB? And I asked for, you know, more graph And I asked for, you know, more graph background on the company, so then staff was able to provide a website because when I went online to look for that particular name, I couldn't find anything at first. And then if this is a, and then how is this contract different from using the contracts that we use for engine number one? If it is a non-investment contract? And because the purpose is to further education for net zero, is that correct? Staff? It is correct, right?
Staff, come on.
Yeah, and so if net zero is part of our investment issues, it was explained to me that it's not really an investment issue, it's more of a, more of a communication effort, an education effort to educate other entities, other companies, other stakeholders in this process. That's right?
Correct. It's it's not an investment contract, it's a
Right.
public affairs, public interest contract that is going to supplement our current
Right.
work and public affairs contract that we have currently in place.
Okay. And and then I was just wondering, because it says and I didn't realize that we CalSTRS had a public affairs contract with different organizations, so it was because of that particular relationship that we have with another public relations firm that they gave us this other, this ground zero, ground, I call it ground zero, ground floor advisors to do this particular contract. Is that right?
I I think I understand what you're asking. The, we currently have a public affairs contract who has a subcontract relationship with another organization. And we are just bringing another contractor onboard to supplement competencies that we are looking for to move forward some work that we want to have performed, starting at an earlier timeframe that would allow for us to do with with taking out an RFP and taking the time to to go through a regular
Okay.
This is the timeline, et cetera.
And then as far as, so it's ground floor advisors is who the contract is with CalSTRS, correct? That's
The company that we're looking to engage with is ground, ground floor public affairs.
Okay.
I think advisors was a typo that we we wanted to correct, so that's correct.
Okay, and then the title is outreach consultant. So is that correct as well?
That's the type of work they're going to be helping us with is outward outreach and engagement. And working with our communication strategies that we're currently engaged with, with our current public affairs contract relationship.
Okay, and finally, because of the timelines that are involved, we could not do an R RFP, correct? And that's why we had to go to the NCB?
Correct. The the timeframe that it takes to to have a full solicitation would would disadvantage some of the work that we would like to have done on a more expedited basis, on a more timely basis. With in in alignment with the work that we have constructed with our current public affairs consultant.
And and talking about the net zero activities that we need to do with our stakeholders and information that we want to get out, and possibly will we possibly use it for the symposium that's coming up next month?
Poss, yeah, possibly, correct.
So that's kind of maybe was the impetus then for having the relationship or having the contract done so expeditiously?
Well, there's a lot, you know, if you, if you look through the net zero insists items in the investment committee, that all the work activity that's outlined in there are on a pretty fast glide path that we don't want to lose momentum to do. So that's why we felt the need to acquire this resource at a faster pace than we would have been able to do at a, through a, through a RFP process.
Yeah, and then, and then my understanding is that CalSTRS and the board rarely uses the NCB process because of of the uniqueness and because of, of, I guess, the transparency, I guess you you would call it, I guess, or just letting it, letting it everyone else know what we're doing, right? Well, we, so we haven't done it very much in the last five years is what I've been told, and so and it's kind of a sacred thing that we want to save it for, for very important things that we want to do expeditiously. Is that right, Brian?
I think that's fair. We obviously shy away from anything that's not transparent and open and following traditional state processes. So I think we've done it, the board's done it maybe three times in the last five years, and the CEOs have maybe done it four or five times, and with the exception of a furniture contract, they've been very low dollar volume contracts. So yes, we do, we, as a system, we avoid anything as much as we can. This is unless there's an urgent need, and I understand that there's a timing need here.
Okay, and at this point, is there any risk of CalSTRS reputation in doing this so expeditiously?
Well, you certainly asked the right questions. So, you know, there's always a risk of everything that we do because we do it in public. But I think the the compelling case is the timing. As Cassandra pointed out, we have a whole plan on on rolling out our approach to net zero, and this, if we had to slow it down for this, it would throw the whole plan off. So the timing, I think, is 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 important. And then the value of the contract is not that high. I think it's $180,000, so we're not making
Compared to our regular
Compared to what we regularly spend. I know it's a lot of money for you and I, and certainly for our members, but from a, from a risk standpoint, because that's really what we look for is a risk or conflict. So I think that those, I think we're in a good place. Certainly, you've got the advice of you know, your, your staff, your lawyers, that, you know, we've, we've, this is a thoughtful process. You appreciate you asking the questions and airing out the issue in public, which is exactly what we like to do, but I think we're, I think this one is justified. And so that's really the approach that we have to take. But you're always subject to criticism on everything that you do, so there's no guarantee.
Right, and and I'm just assuming that all the due diligence and checking out the firms and doing all the things that we needed to do that were, CalSTRS is accustomed to doing, have been done to get to this point to be put on the agenda for this item.
Yes, there was a lot of background work. I I didn't do it, but I'm aware of it. I think there was, I did some research on some of the legal issues, but I know the staff did market research to make sure that they were indeed engaging a reputable firm, the pricing was right, that they could perform the duties that we could, and really got a view of the marketplace.
Okay.
They did that due diligence.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Cassandra. Thank you. Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me for my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Yamamoto. Anyone need to speak further on this item?
See a couple of hands.
Oh, okay. Mr. Prisant and Ms. Miller?
Sure. Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand this agreement as well. I read it and and sort of looked at the website as well. And my impression is, is that this is an effort by us to reach out to our stakeholders and to determine their views and to, you know, really work in a collaborative way with on the, on the net zero approach that we're taking with with our stakeholders. And in that, because of, you know, we've got this, this symposium coming up, there's an example of an effort and that, that, that they were going to supplement that and add to it in some fashion. Is that what you understand, Cassandra?
Yes, it, yes, it is, Bill. The the symposium is coming up just within a week, so you know, there is a little bit more work besides, you know, that we need to finish off. But the the plan is and the target is to be able to have them onboard to help us through that, correct? There'll, there'll be a number of things coming up, yes.
And that's why it's an outreach, essentially why you called it an outreach agreement.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, fine, that clears it up for me.
Thank you, Mr. Prisant. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Yamamoto. Those were such helpful questions. Thank you. I'm comfortable with all the other contracts listed here. If if you're open to separating the item, I would vote against the CGI contract. If you're not, I would abstain from the item. So I just wanted to make sure my vote was clear. Either way is fine. I just, I just wanted to let you know.
Terrific. So seeing no other, no other hands, can Ms. Bell, you come on and take the votes. We'll do it in two different, we'll do them in the CGI.
Yeah, I just Chair, I apologize. I know that there's a lot going on. It's almost four o'clock. If I may, for our newest board member, Ken Tang, for that, that, that education item that's on, I don't know, Brian, if this is okay? But, you know, Ken was interested in joining Denise and I on the NCTR, NERS, NASRA educational event, which I would welcome him to join us, and I just wondered if we could just add Ken's name next to Denise and I's name on the education item. Is that okay, Roslyn, Brian, for us to do that?
I believe that you can revise the board items as you go and make
I would hope so.
But looking, make sure the CEO nods their head that it's okay.
Cassandra, is that okay?
Yeah, that that works fine. Yeah, but we had suggested Ken to attend that, actually, so but that worked out, yeah.
Perfect. Thanks so much. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think that's my last interruption for today. My apologies.
Okay.
Okay, and so just so that I'm clear, so what we're voting on right now is that the item 15 D or, because we did a consent agenda, and then I also wanted to know, are we, what contracts confirm, what contracts are included? So if someone can tell me what the motion is? Can I just clarify? We, we already approved the education item, so maybe through a consent, if we're going to add, if we're going to add another item to it, may, do we need to revoke for that? Okay, well, we can do that. Should we do that first? Certainly. Well, I don't know. I would say yes. Okay, so who wants, why don't you?
I'll move the board education item with the addition of Mr. Tang for the
Okay.
National Conference of Retired Teachers.
Okay, great, thank you. So Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Mr. Prisant?
Yes.
Mr. Tang?
Yes.
Ms. Erdan?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Controller Yi?
Aye.
Great. All right, so that was the educational item. And then what is the motion for item 15D?
I would, I would move approval of item 15D with the exception of the CGI conference contract. Sorry, the other one was a conference. Sorry.
Your second?
Oh, second, it's Joy.
Thank you.
Take the vote on that, please.
I I want to make sure I understand the motion. What are we voting on?
I'm, I'm voting to approve every contract listed in the regular meeting item 15D except for the CGI contract on page 144 of the, in the diligent book. The CGI Technologies and Solutions, Inc. Data Validation Analysts Contract. I'd like to learn more about that one, please. But every other, there's, I believe, four or five other contracts in that item, all of which I'm moving to support.
All right, so I had so moved by Gal and seconded by Joy. And so, Ms. Bradford? Your vote?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Mr. Prisant?
Yes.
Mr. Tang?
Yes.
Ms. Erdan?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Controller Yi?
Aye.
Thank you.
Remains the CGI contract, and I believe Ms. Miller said she was going to abstain from this item. So is there a motion to approve the CGI contract recommendation?
Is there a time element here, staff?
I believe that, I believe their current contract is expiring, and we're, we're exercising the option to extend it. I'm going to add the funds to extend it. That was the timing for that, otherwise the work would not continue.
And and their work is is on the front burner now? I mean, we need to extend it within what time period to have them keep working?
I think this is time period in the next two weeks. I think it's expiring.
So I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and properly seconded. Take the roll, please.
And so, Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Higa?
Yes.
Mr. Prisant?
Yes.
Mr. Tang?
Yes.
Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
No.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Controller Yi?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Samantha, any members of the public wishing to speak to to item 15?
There are no members of the public in queue.
Thank you. Item 16, items referred by the committee for for board decision?
There were no items referred to the board by the committee for decision.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Seventeen is new business and review of information requests. Do we have any information requests?
On item eight, I had two information requests. One was for for information regarding the impact on bridge financing for the new headquarters expansion at a later date on the financing, impact on the fund of the bridge financing. And then the second was different scenarios regarding the leasing of the building and whether or not it's leased and the impact on the financing also at a later date. And so those were the two information items that I had. And then the other items under 13, I wrote as just feedback, I mean, sorry, on the benchmarks, I wrote as feedback to our consultant, Mekita, that you can clarify if you if you have any other items.
Were there any other information requests from the board that Ms. Bell didn't capture? I think she got them all. Thank you. Cassandra, draft agenda for the next meeting?
We just have a
Highlight?
Yeah, just a couple of things that we deferred from this meeting will will carry over to the next meeting, which is the LTIP. And the strategic plan, it was going to be the second reading, but it will be the first reading with the option to take action if the board chooses to do so at that meeting. And then just a couple of other adjustments on just the format, but that doesn't need to be gone over today. So those are the only two things that I had.
Thanks very much, Cassandra. Samantha, do we have any members of the public that would like to address the board on items that are not on our agenda today?
There are no members of the public in queue.
Okay. Oral turning brings us to the end of our meeting, the end of the day. Any, anything for the good of the order? Seeing none, I want to thank everyone for a very productive and I believe very inclusive day of conversations and discussions. I want to thank everyone. Have a wonderful weekend.